Just ignore it.
Okay. It being 6:30, we will open up the regular planning board meeting on Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. The first item on our agenda is the continued public hearing for site plan approval, Zero Brook Street. The application is by Brook Street Phase 3 Solar LLC. So at the last meeting, the applicant made a presentation. The plans were reviewed by the planning board's consulting engineer who is present. So is there anything the applicant wants to say before we hear from John about his review?
We have nothing else.
Okay. So John, would you please give a summary for the board?
So as I typically do, I write a fairly detailed letter. And then I'm just sort of sort of a summary of that because my letter covers all the requirements and goes point by point individually. But some of the issues the board may want to consider and make findings on things like that, I'll sort of give a short list. So site control, the plans. So we know that the property is owned by multiple parcels owned by either members of a family or some trust or whatever it is, the LLC that's created for it. And there'll be a lease coming out of that for this piece. And in the submittal, it was like eight and a half by 11 sheen, which is pretty hard to follow. And my recommendation is to get eight, bigger sheet. It shows how it's all laid out. There's a lot of overlapping pieces and it's pretty difficult to follow. The next one, proof of liability in terms under that section, there was a subsection requiring a bond. Since they're not proposing any landscaping, they don't propose a bond, but I'm not sure that the board should decide whether the landscaping also includes just the general vegetation of the site. Because you have to, I mean, there's been a lot of underground, some of it has essentially been pot soil. It's excavated, it's kind of a mess in areas. So to get vegetation to grow, you're gonna have to put down sufficient suitable pot soil, etc., more vegetation to grow. I get into it more in the drainage, but I mean, here's a site that you have a pretty good example. You've got three of them to build over this period of time. And then this one's coming. And if you look at the ones that was done most recently, the vegetation really isn't there.
Okay.
And you know, I recommend if you take a look at it, it's like an ocean of slope. There's sparse vegetation and it's sparse even when you're standing up looking at it from a distance. And anybody who's planted a lawn knows when you're looking at it from a distance, it always looks way better than if you happen to be standing right over looking down at it. So I think that's a concern is that the other one didn't really come in and does that bond cover the vegetation, period. I mean, this is a site that has no vegetation over it. And the rest of it's gonna all degrade and regrade. So nothing's really gonna remain as far as talking, so it's gonna be real. Under siting requirements for ground mound systems, and then this discussion on this position, I raised these issues because they're for the boards at the site. So one of the things under siting, number one, site is, if the site's been cleared for five years, the site, looking at Google Earth, there's more recent clearing that's been done, more recent earthwork. It doesn't look like there's anything active when I went out there a few weeks ago, but obviously it's partially been mined and there's a tree farm for Christmas trees. But areas have changed within that five year period.
Were you able, on Google, were you able to determine when it was cleared?
I think it was, so it's 2025, I think it was probably three years ago.
Okay.
And actually, I think it was a little bit over some time.
Yeah, a little.
Probably worked an area and did an area and did an area. And this, and some of it has Christmas trees, some of the Christmas trees have been moved probably more recently.
Yeah.
Because you can see the holes where they're below. But those are areas that haven't been like stripped.
Yeah. And I appreciate this, we're gonna be doing a site visit in a couple of weeks, so these are.
Yeah, I think that's something, and that relates to a couple of things. So there's, depending upon how you view all that, there's, there's a 10% clearing limit that may or may not apply, but that's something that you can look at. Setbacks, so there's, this place is essentially surrounded by other land that the owners, just the other sold projects, including Flintton Sand and gravel, there and butter. Then there's a cranberry bog on another side. They don't meet all of the setbacks to the cranberry bog property and they don't meet the setback. There's 150 foot setback with you, but it's the same owner, 300 foot to a property line, 150 feet undisturbed for any other owner. They have a discussion on that in their application, but I'm going strictly by what the bylaws does.
Yeah, so what you're telling me is they're not meeting the 300 foot setback to a property line of another property owner?
Correct.
Well, the regulations are pretty clear about that. I mean, I remember writing them, it's very clear.
No, right.
It says zoning requirement.
Yeah.
Great. Okay.
So I listen.
I appreciate that.
And then there's the 150 to their own property.
Yep.
The other, so when you read the plans, there's a statement that basically the existing conditions is from some other plan. And I would recommend that you require them to give you that other plan because usually the survey has reference as to how it was done, when it was done, you know, all those. Because all those notes that you get from the survey add on their plans, they just say, we use this survey.
Yep.
So I have some more detail on that, like property lines with dimensional data, that's some of the stuff that's required. This one, this is the first time I've seen it and I'm not exactly familiar with what it is specifically. Most of them have a chain link fence around it that's secure. This one, they're proposing a wall required deer fence, which I'm not familiar with what that actually strength wise is like. I mean, the chain link fence, we don't kind of know. I have deer fence around my garden, which is plastic and probably not that. If they really wanna get through or they think they can, one of my neighbors had one jump just the other day and it's six feet high. Anyway.
Are the other solar, I'm sorry if you don't mind my interrupting. Are the other solar fields enclosed with a chain link fence?
Yeah.
Okay. So it'd be changing what the standard has been set out there?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, you didn't want to know what exactly it is.
Okay.
There's probably a lot of range of what a deer fence might be.
Sure.
Compared to strength and size and all that. So it might be fine, but I don't know. Can you bring a sample? No trees over 10 inches. I mean, there aren't a lot of trees that are big up here. There's one section that has some overgrown trees sort of towards the, I think it said north. And maybe, maybe we could put the plan up there that could kind of.
Doctor jump.
Never know which way I'm facing, I always think the plans have north straight up, but they don't always. Occasionally you get a south facing. But so, so this area here, there's more larger trees. Most of the rest of it, there's not much, but this area here, they are probably, and they look like they're mostly planted, but they're pretty big. So that's something. And you'll get to see that when you look out.
Can I just, can I just ask you, John, can you just turn the plan for a second so that the member of the public who's present and point out the area so that you can see where it is?
So the northern end up here.
Thanks.
So, so many other things, maybe the sins of the past show up because we're looking at the last one in the room. It's always the last one that gets the, so this is the, there's a couple of different ways in. This is the deeded, I believe, access coming in off of Brook Street here. It's kind of convoluted because I think they own some of it, there's access easements, but permanent easements for some of it. And it comes in down this way to the northern end. This has not been used or maintained in its own ground and.
And that's.
Public safety has commented on any of these things, but so this is the deeded access, but everybody comes in through Flintton Sand and gravel and through here.
Okay.
That's how I came in. It really, I mean, maybe you can get in there, but we can't do this.
And that, do they, and they don't have legal access through Flintton Sand and gravel?
They have a license, by understanding as I was told, they can explain better, but that's how it was described to me. And I was told that's the way to go in, is to come in. They, you know, they have a paved road into the site, Flintton Sand and gravel. Then you're kind of going along the power lines on sort of the bumpy dirt.
Okay.
Access this. I mean, I have a four wheeled drive pickup truck, I was fine. I wouldn't be able to do it in my car.
Okay.
More than likely, I wouldn't want to do it in my car. So I think there's some stuff to talk about there. This side coming down in, so there's an existing access to this one, which comes like this down into here. The plan sort of needs clarification there. So this access on the existing one that's there, there's gravelish road. And then there's on the sides, the stone lined swales, like pretty substantial stone lined swales. They're gonna branch off and come through here. They kind of need details of the swales.
Yeah.
How that's all gonna work. It's over a 16% grade proposed. We walked it in the field. I pointed out some of these issues in the field because I could see them as being a problem right off the bat. And I'm not sure how the leases all work out, but that seems like not really suitable at 16, over 16% access grade for, I mean, it's a fire. I know that these things don't require much maintenance, but you know, they have, they have caught a fire, I guess, at times. So whether a fire truck can negotiate all that and get in, I wouldn't be surprised if they're already looking at that issue, because I brought it up before. And there may be some room to work on that. Problem is, there's the wetland here, so you pinch a little bit. But it does look like if you could come in lower and bridge, you know, over the swale, you could break that grade down.
Sure. But there's nothing on the plan that indicates how that's being.
There's what?
There's nothing in the drawings that indicate how that's being proposed.
Well, right now, it's, there's no indication exactly where the, this swale sort of, I mean, it's stone, big stone.
Right.
It's deep.
Right.
It's something you.
They have to, they have to cross the swell to make that.
I think so, but it's not clear exactly where it is.
Okay.
That's something, if you're gonna do a site visit, you may want some of this stuff marked.
Sure.
So you know where you are and you can kind of judge what's going on.
Okay.
That would be an area of concern.
Okay.
I believe this is also an area of concern down here, which I will get to. So the southerly access, which is, I believe, since they have permission now, that's how you would actually build it. You'd come down through here and bring this stuff up through here. This one, it's about 7% grade.
Okay.
The issue on this side is that there's a, this site built on, they built, you know, various features. There's an infiltration basin that was designed here. I looked at the old data and I couldn't find all of the stuff, but I found enough to realize this was supposed to be an infiltration basin. It is full water, cat tails, it is not working at all.
Okay.
This road sort of expands off of that. I mean, they're proposing another infiltration basin sort of up the slope next to it, but some of the water from this site, most of it, you know, goes into this basin and obviously getting into other issues, they're supposed to maintain those things, they're supposed to maintain that basin. And now they're building a whole bunch of new basins. And how's that gonna work when you got one that already does? And how are you gonna maintain it if you haven't been maintaining it? So, I mean, I know they go to different parties, somebody else leases it and they're always gonna say they have probably better than the other one, but I think you gotta.
At the end of the day, it's not getting done.
Not in this case.
Yeah.
That's definitely not working.
Okay.
And it's a problem. And I think you really wanna have fire fleet, whoever, you know, that needs to problem town, take a look at how they're gonna get into these if there is some sort of incident where you need to get there for whatever reason. Can they get in? Are they gonna be able to? I mean, public safety people generally will find a way inefficiently, like the fire department, they'll take care of, forest fire truck, wherever it's gotta go. Gotta worry about permission, I would expect, if somebody's heard out there. But you don't wanna have to put them through all kinds of problems to get there. The, the other thing, so, you know, and the connection's gonna, you know, here's the power line connection's gonna come down in here, but they don't really detail it, sort of off the limit of the thing. They usually get details of how many holes, how many holes, all that stuff.
Yep.
Whether or not you're gonna want, and you, you know, there's limited data on material. Sometimes you get material data sheets on the equipment, things like that. One other thing on the road that they are building, I think you are gonna want the swales because the reason this thing isn't working, it appears, I'm not gonna try to say why, but it appears that this, you know, this is all dirt road that just doesn't, it washes out and the dirt gets into the basin more than likely. I can't guarantee that's why it's failing. It could be it was dug in water table, it could be they used, they didn't build it right. You know, there's a whole host of reasons why these things don't work. But for the most part out here, it's all sands and gravel material. So it's theoretically shouldn't be the issue. You know, you get pockets of stuff that's not as good and there's definitely, we see evidence from this one. This is pretty big rocks too, but you know, the soil tends to be a sandy soil. It's not like a lot of Flintton has till that's never gonna rain. So I talked a little bit about maintenance. I mean, they have basically, they have protocols and annual inspection and I think especially in the beginning, you wanna make sure everything is working, everything's been established vegetation wise before anything, before they start repairing that back with it. Schematics, usually you get electrical schematics, not that I know how to read them, but somebody might. You should review the financial surety data, cost estimate, appears to be by the engineer, not a third party separate. I don't know if you have somebody look at the insurance aspect of it. I wouldn't suggest that I'm somebody who would wanna do that or would even know what I'm looking at. I just pay my bill when it comes in. The, the next one, obviously, you know, the site, you know, this is kind of down. So Brook Street's up here and this is definitely well balled Brook Street. You're never gonna see it from Brook Street. There aren't that many houses around. There's the owner's house. There's a house down here and somewhere down in here. It doesn't actually show in the plan, but there's this house down here, cranberry bog over here. But, and it might be some, I mean, there's quite a bit of woods in here, but there's probably houses up in there. Screening, I think it's gonna be hard to see for most places, but screening is something you should sort of look at in a general way and if people, I don't know if anybody here is from the others, whatever, people that live around me have something to say. If there's specific questions or interest in that, when you do your site visit, you can kind of see. This tiny area, of course, everything's pretty well leased out. Can't see much when it comes to winter time, you might see a little more. There is somewhat of a berm, I think. Now, this is not, you know, they're back here, but there's a berm down along here. That one. This one, if you look down. You have the grade in here, I'm sure. This is the whole plan set?
Yeah.
Just looking to see for the.
The green plenty before it. I just, I looked at the site plan.
I'm about there, I think. So like this is cut and this is cut. So there's steep slopes here, steep slopes here. This, there's a steep slope between these right now, with sort of like a road along top of it, and that's getting lowered a bit. So most of this, like I was saying, is below, you know, it's, you'd be looking right over it. And this side is higher too, and there's a bit of a mound here that looks, I think there's a little bit of a cut right here on this side too. So it's lower here. So for the most part, it slopes up this way, but to the close side, it's a, there's a slope cut down and then you gradually go up. So I'm not sure how much it's gonna be visible, but that's something you kind of wanna see over.
Do you know if this would require exporting gravel, earth removal exercise?
I think it's hard to say because the whole place gets sort of regraded. And right now, it's, you know, literally you're up, you're down, there's holes, there's hills. You, I don't know if earthwork was done, I guess you could ask for that. I think the goal was to take what's there and more or less even it out. I guess there's two, they've probably taken the best stuff out already, but still, I mean, they probably took the good stuff. Not to say that you don't find, but usually you find a vein, a hole, and it runs out. But I, I don't know, but that's a fair question you could ask. I think there is some cut, but there's in the, in the existing case, you know, there's like a, a big hole here, a big hole here. This is, this kind of a ridge here, you look down in, and then there's sort of piles of stuff they didn't want. I assume at the top, so it'd be very, be a little bit complicated, earthwork calving, I think, because it's so disturbed right now. So under the screening, that's one thing you gotta look at. The other thing is controlled vegetation. I think that you look at this, if you see this dark line, darker section here, I think this was generated by AutoCAD, I love AutoCAD, assuming it's AutoCAD, 99% of people use AutoCAD, but these contours are like computer generated and I don't know.
That's why I said.
So this is like a one to one, a steeper slope. That's like a one to one slope.
Okay. What about, so if you got a one to one slope, is there anything about slopes to stabilize the slope?
Oh yeah, you're never gonna get that. I mean, this slope that's here now isn't stable, but between the two is already one. That's a bigger issue than the screening, self stabilization. The slopes are too steep, they don't really have details of that. And you're gonna need that, I mean, one to one slope, you're not gonna get vegetation on it anyway.
No.
Gravel, not gonna happen. So there needs to be some.
Yep.
Information on how that's gonna happen. I mean, I think in the, in the gravel out here, the one's marginal to establish stable. Three to one would probably be more reasonable, but, excuse me. There were studies done and included in the report that I would say that I don't know how to read those or understand them, even though I could probably give you a shot, but I'm not gonna try to tell the board about it. There's noise, there's glare. I'm sure I could read it and understand what it said, but not give you any sort of expert opinion on what it means. The, the other issue is signage, they just say they're gonna, they wanna conform to whatever, there's no, usually the signage above like color, safety and all those type of things. If you do approve the plan ultimately, you may wanna condition on the signage since it's not included now.
Yep.
So if you get what you need. I'm not sure, and they may know, I usually call Ryan, but I didn't get a chance, the status on the wetland lines out here. I will say, I know, they don't, they show wetland here, there's a potential burnable, they have setback from that. There's a pretty massive wetland, you know, you're out there, you can actually see it through the woods over in this area that they flagged a piece of it. So you got.
So is there some flagging out there for wetlands?
You could see some of them through the woods, but I just don't know if it's been ground by the commission or that sort of thing. That's one of the questions. So this is a potential burnable, this was flagged wetlands, they have a buffer here. I think this is 200 feet, which we have with the west label. And then, so that's the very northern end. There's another wetland. It's over here. So this is the southern end.
Yep.
This wetland kind of, the wetland is over on this side, mostly off the property, but a little bit comes in here.
Okay.
In this corner. This is the cran, these I believe are the cranberry logs. Now, they weren't identified as a wetland, but I believe that they would be unless they were built out of upland, which maybe, I don't know the details, but typically, I mean, they show up with an SGIS as a wetland. But they don't have, they don't show that with a buffer. They're pretty far away, but usually if you wanna see that. And my, my problem should just be done. So this plan is okay for just giving it in. So basically what's happening is the whole site's gonna sort of get graded, kind of smoothed off, I guess I would say, at, you know, a moderate slope. They have a proposed infiltration basin here. There's kind of a low spot in here. One of the things in the design that I think is missing is this out there in the site, of course, now it's been disturbed, I don't know what it looked like before, but even before, it looks like there were plenty of low areas within the property. And water goes to the low areas, probably groundwater in the spring and some of these low areas as well. They don't, they just have design points that say it goes to like this, this spot. But if the spot's a low spot and it traps water, there's nowhere to get it out, that should be modeled upon.
Right.
And if you gotta fill it and alter it, whatever.
Right.
Because, you know, it's not like a discharge point, it's a collection point. So most of them, there's most, you know, based on the grades out there now, and the topo does look fairly consistent with what's out there. It's pretty hard to tell because it's literally piles and holes and, you know, very steep sections and all that. But essentially, most of the runoff goes to holes on site. This area slopes off, they have the small basin here to pick up this road. Again, I think this is a problematic area, given the fact that the other area with the, you know, the other basin literally is right here. It's failed. And then there's this one right here. And you got the same sort of gravel road. Most of this goes to this one. The way from it, the high point is here, coming down. But I think that they need, because of the steepness there, that's an area where you'd wanna have the swales stabilized and controlled, collect the water, direct it, don't let it just go off. Because we know from what we've seen, that's not working. There's no soil testing at any of the basins. You have a whole bunch of those untested. There's a whole bunch of details for these based on the, you know, it could be used as a reference because that's what your bylaws say. And it's one of the things is, you know, how are you gonna get to these access maintenance, especially considering maintenance on the past ones with the, the berm? I think what we ultimately would probably want is to blow up the some of these, but some of these may be modified because you might just take, like in an area like this, I believe this is gonna be a hole. It's a natural, not natural, but it's a hole now. They may wanna modify this to just to kind of use what's there, but we still need to know that the soils are gonna work. It might be easier to kind of build into what's there without having to build a basin to go into a hole this 20 feet wide. Here, you're definitely gonna have to do something because you gotta have concentrated flow. Maybe it would be better to fix this one and make it bigger and work together for the whole thing. You gotta fix it anyway. I don't wanna tell them how to do it, I'm just closing some thoughts. There's another basin up. So basically the divide, I believe, is here. So this goes this way and this goes this way. And then there's a little, then there's, you know, something that goes here through this site, there's this slope. And then the other part goes, you know, down that road. So they have another basin. Up here and another one here, and this is the, the wetland potential burnable. But if, and you can't, on this plan, one of my comments on the figure line was, on this plan, there's not that many contour labels, so it's really hard to follow what's existing versus proposed, because you gotta flip to the other plan.
Yeah.
The other thing is, some of them are. The other thing is, some of them are two-foot intervals under the one-foot interval, which makes it tough to bounce back and forth between them two.
Which raises, yeah, which raises the question what the base survey is, right?
Yeah. It does, I mean, it does look pretty close to what I see out of the field, but it would be helpful, like when you see something like this with a closer, it's a lower, it's a path.
Right, right.
I mean, out in the field, I can see, there's low points around.
Mm-hmm.
And, but without the labels, it just takes, it takes more time, it takes more effort than it would be, guys, to show, actually, usually low points by survey standards, you have little actors around, and you know, it's going down.
Mm-hmm.
Very few people do that anymore, but that's kind of what the, the standard should be, and it would make it easier. But if that's the case, and there's a hole right here, does this change the whole? The other thing, um, you know, there's a whole bunch of, you know, comments on the runoff part of it. They want to assume that this is gonna be a meadow, there's no way that's gonna be a meadow. Meadow is a totally different condition.
So they
Lucky to get good grass.
Well, in looking at the, what we have out there for precedence, right? What's there now, the other
It's not a meadow.
I mean, the other solar fields, they're not meadows.
No?
No.
To get a meadow, you need subsoil, topsoil, you need a deep root.
Right.
It, it's not happening out there, especially in an old gravel pit anyway.
Right. Are they A soils though? Are they A or B soils?
It's A soils.
A soils.
But to get something to grow
Yeah.
You need, actually, you need some tighter soil.
Something to slow it down.
Yeah, you need tighter soil, you need stuff that the roots and stuff can get into. And you don't have any of that.
Right.
And there's no details of how much topsoil, and you're definitely gonna need a sufficient amount to get anything to grow, which I think is the problem going on to the other one. They probably ran out of them. So that's, that's gonna be an issue. I think that way underestimates the runoff as well, when you call it a meadow, because runoff curve numbers on an A soil is the same as wood, for the meadow. But if it's grass, it's higher, which is what it would be. And even then, when you look at the other place, it's not even 75% grass.
Right.
So, I think that's a problem, because it's gonna change the runoff radius. So, I talked, okay, I talked about soil testing, I talked about access, there's not very much impervious out there, but given the fact that what we see with the ones that are clocked up, I think you need to do a little more for pretreatment on the basins to keep the dirt out of it. They got a four bay, it's kind of an awkward thing, it's sort of a long linear four bay. But in A soils, you're supposed to have 44% pretreatment, you only get 25% four bay.
Okay.
So...
Is it all, is anything piped, captured and piped, or is it all over?
No, it's just captured by open land flow, and it's theoretically, doesn't have any impervious, because the panels, I consider what's underneath them.
Correct.
But the trouble is, if you don't get the grass established in time, and you can't, in some places you can, the one out on Lake Street, the soil was, they had a ton of topsoil because it was, and it was tight soil, so it could get grass in there. Still, places weren't so easy, but here, where it's a strip site, in these soils, it's really hard to get stuff to grow. And that means that whatever's there washes into it.
Right.
This is at the low point. So you really kind of, you gotta kind of consider those factors in the whole design. You, they want a, they're gonna need to do a, still want to do a prevention plan for someone, this is way over acre.
Yep.
You may want to review that before it starts. I mean, this is a pretty easy site to contain, because it's already big holes that are there, but in the, I mean, the only real wet, there's wetlands here, and there's some wetlands down on the southwest side and the south side. But most of it, you're cutting in, so you're not getting the wetlands. So it should be easy enough to do, but you see, but, you know, there's a lot of disturbance, this also, there's dust and things like that come out of places like this. Of course, you're right next to, look, they're saying the gravel, so they're probably just as, how much worse is it gonna be than, than an active gravel pit? Probably not, but you just want to make sure that you get that in there. Again, I talked about the maintenance, I think that, you know, DMP maintenance for basins and all that should be consistent with the handbook, which is more frequent than their before. The site is, because it's the A soils, it's in the highest agricultural protection district. It's pretty high in terms of the elevations, most of it, of course, they've dug some of it down, but, you know, you may want test pits for, or you should have test pits at these locations, wherever they're gonna put a basin, and even if it changes, then maybe we work that and do tests in there. But also, you need to, you're not supposed to cut, I think, within 10 feet of groundwater in that protection district. So there's, you know, they need to demonstrate that, or they need a special permit. So those are things to consider. Then, under your planning board regs, most of the stuff I've talked about is already, you know, is duplicated in the planning board regs themselves, but you're gonna want a sign off on every sheet
Yep.
For the site, designing plan. Do you want a landscaping plan or not? That sort of plays in the bigger picture, the whole screening and the other thing. Development impact statement, I don't know if you've asked for that on the other ones, but that's in the regs. And there's like soil testing, permeability testing, things like that in the regs, which make a lot of sense in places where really poor soils, but the end soils that they use involves, it may not be necessary, but they should have been, yeah. You always get pockets of stuff this up, so good, even in that one area. That's, that's my summary, so if you have any other questions for me, hopefully, can you answer them?
I'm good at the moment, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, thanks.
Does the applicant want to respond to any of these issues?
Thank you, thank you, John. So for the record, Zach Parkus with the, Greg Sampson. It's a fantastic report, right? It's a, it's a 20-page letter, we got it on Friday, a couple days after you folks got it. So we've reviewed the letter.
A day. A day.
So we've reviewed the letter on the weekend, we'll leave it today. We're putting together kind of a response, but John's summary was great. He had about 20 bullet points that he just brought up here. Our draft letter has about 30 items that, 30, 35 items that we want to respond directly to, not from a contradictory standpoint, but yes, we've adjusted this, we've added that, we've changed this. So ultimately, there's nothing in the letter that puts me in a position where I want to try to challenge anything, right? I want to try to find, make the adjustments that John, John is suggesting, where asked and where we can do it. And after our first read, there's nothing that, that we see that we can't accomplish. So, it's a fantastic letter, very, very detailed, and we'll be putting together a formal response, but there's inevitably gonna be some communication, some back and forth, some, hey, we said meadow, you said good grass, if we do that, we do this, and that breaks this, and that does that. So, you know, certainly looking for permission from the board for both John and my team to communicate in the time period between meetings, so that we can try to make progress toward a response that, you know, we're not only asking our questions at biweekly or bimonthly meetings. So, summarize, that'll be the first question. Would the board be amenable, amenable to allowing John and my team to continue to, to communicate or to start communicating over this letter?
What's the pleasure of the board?
I, I have no objection, but I also understand John's very busy. So if that's something he's comfortable with, I don't want to put him in a position that it's not something he's comfortable doing.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem talking. Yeah, I am, right now, yeah, I got slammed recently with all this stuff, so I'm pretty busy. So, if you can, ideally, maybe give me a heads up, like, okay, we want to talk about this, this, and this, so that I'm not just...
Yeah, my general kind of MO here would be two, panel letter, a response letter to the 30, 35 items
Sure.
Of that. If I published that letter, I'd hand it to the planning board at the next meeting, but in the meantime, we'd say, hey, we'd like to talk about item six, eight, 12, 14.
Yeah.
Where do you build it? Like, that's anything. Because we want to document, there's a lot in there, right? 20 pages.
Oh, sure.
So we want to document the changes that get into the next plan set, so that when I come in, whether it's next meeting or the meeting after, 10 meetings from now, to say, hey, we've checked off all 35 items, it's good, I just want to make sure there's a, there's a clear document trail that we can all follow to make sure we didn't lose something that may or may not be, but yeah, I wouldn't, wouldn't surprise you, so.
Okay, yeah, that's, that I'm fine.
Awesome.
The only thing I'd just say is, yes, time to, it takes me a little time to get through one of these, so it's like, I, I know you got this just before, you know, just last week, and when I get your response, it takes me some time to go through it.
Hundred percent.
So we have to set out enough time to give you full time to get through it, and me is kind of a deal.
Hundred percent.
Is there anything else?
I think that was the question, was it answered by the board?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Terrific. So as we're moving, John referenced the waiver toward the end of what he was discussing. He mentioned all the site plan review requirements, and a lot of them are duplicated, but there is a pretty clear site plan review checklist, for lack of a better term. On the 23rd, we drafted a waiver request, we handed it off at the meeting of 7:15 formally to the board. I have a copy here, but ultimately, there's four or five items that are, using my words, typically waived in a, a solar site plan review. They include things like traffic, elevation, facade treatment of proposed buildings, et cetera, et cetera. If you had a chance to review that, I think I would request that the board approve those waivers, because what I don't want to do is get a couple months in, and as we're nearing the finish line or the time to close, you guys ask me where the traffic report is, for an example. So I just wanted to try to get on the same page, or at worst, see if there was any objections to the waiver request that I submitted.
Well, I can say, we don't vote any of the waivers until we vote on the actual site plan. We never vote that in advance.
Okay.
But if you look at our past decisions, which Attorney Sampson is familiar with, we do waive things that are not applicable to solar projects.
Okay. The main reason I ask is for what I brought up, but obviously, a law has changed solar projects in the past that the town applied in compared to right now, right? The bylaw is much more robust compared to past versions of it. So if there was any commentary from the board on the waiver request, the letter that I submitted, I'd love to hear it, at least, so I'm not totally caught flat-footed if there is something that you guys are objecting to.
I think, I mean, I don't know if anybody wants to comment on that right now, I don't know if anyone has that in front of them as we're sitting here, but we can certainly, you know, take that up at the next meeting. I think if you look at the decisions for Lake Street Solar and Mayflower and Maine Solar, you can see that the waiver requests made for waivers under the Planning Board Site Plan Review Regulations, which I believe are the same waivers that you're looking for, are the waivers that were granted in those applications. So even though the zoning bylaw has changed, the site plan review regulations did not.
Very good. Okay, that's very helpful. The final item, it was brought up in, in John's memo, and we'll certainly address it in our response, but while I'm here, we're running concurrent to this planning board process, the Conservation Commission process, our notice of intent leading to an order of conditions. So we have met, I think it's three times with the Conservation Commission, we have done sidewalks with the Conservation Commission peer reviewer, we have done sidewalks with the Conservation Commission. We have updated our plans, a kind of second step, to which we're gonna roll in all of these updates that John's requested in the next revision. But the summary to where we are in Conservation Commission is, Agent Bossa has encouraged us to just continue, continue to continue the Conservation Commission meetings until this board is done. Their jurisdictional areas have been reviewed in detail, they have granted any associated waivers, and as far as my communications with, with Mr. Bossa are concerned, there's no more open items with that board. Obviously, they're watching what happens with this board, so that if there are any material changes to the design that could impact what they've looked at and kind of decided on, obviously, we, we don't want the, the plan set revisions to fall out of lockstep. But that's the summary of, of where we're at with CONSCOM.
Okay, that's a question.
Please.
Have they approved your wetland delineation?
We have not done in Anrad, but there is, there aren't any questions with the wetland lines right now. The locking of the wetland lines will be done with the issuance of the order of conditions. Part of the reason we and the commissioner, excuse me, the agent, agreed to skip that process is because we've already gone through three notice of intent through this, this property, and the wetlands that are identified are essentially the same as have been always identified.
To this far west of the project? I mean, the project is morphing to the north or to the west, right?
Yep.
Right, so did you, did you look at the wetlands on that side of the project back in the first three phases?
That's the large wetland, the pond you referred to, there are a pond to the west, there's the existing wetland cranberry box to the south, which John pointed out, we can certainly add those to the plans, we don't delineate wetlands that are not on our property, so that's why they didn't show up, but we can certainly pull the lines from the SGIS. And then there's the small wetland, the potential vernal pool to the north. So those are, those are there, they've been peer reviewed in the field by the Conservation Commission's peer reviewer and the agent.
Okay.
So right now, there's no controversy around them. And we're hundreds of feet off them, there's, the setbacks are, are quite extensive. As you guys know, the Conservation Commission also has a slope multiplier that takes the typical setbacks from a wetlands per the Wetland Protection Act and extends them even more. So as, as John mentioned, you guys will see when you're on the site, this is a beat-up, very steep site, so our, our slope multiplier requires some of the setbacks to be 1.75X.
What triggers your need for an order of conditions?
First is the potential vernal pool to the north.
What you have not, have or have not confirmed is there?
We've confirmed, so, potential vernal pool, using capitalized terms, we've agreed that it can be a vernal pool, the wetlands bylaws in the town regard anything potential lowercase p as a vernal pool. So we're treating it as a vernal pool, similar to my comment with John, we're not contesting anything. We've set our setbacks 100 feet from the mean annual high water level, and then another 100 feet. There's a very small disturbance area, about 9,000 square feet at the very edge of that second 100-foot buffer, so 200 feet from the potential vernal pool, it's already previously disturbed, and you'll see the line type when you look at the plan set on that emergency access road, it's different than a typical access road. It's a pervious road built to kind of minimize, to the extent practicable, the impact on any area there. So that waiver to work within that buffer zone has already been approved by the Conservation Commission. That was the only, I'll call it, kind of sensitive area that we're really looking after this.
What makes it a pervious road?
It's, it's kind of a honeycomb design that has open areas in the middle. It's almost like a paver system.
A paver with openings?
Yeah. Okay, I think that's, that's all I have, unless there's any comments, questions from the board or miss the floor, I'm happy to, happy to chat through those, but ultimately, depends to paper, updating the plan set so that we can, we can address the comments that Mr. Chesky has brought up.
Definitely, I'd see some on this proposed fencing versus what's been used everywhere else.
That was interesting, happy to have that conversation. The agricultural fence that we're proposing actually costs more than a typical chain link fence, it's simply what some jurisdiction has, have guided us toward. If you guys recall, certainly Plimpton's been doing solar for the last 12 years, the first solar projects were chain link with two feet of barbed wire on top, right? And people didn't like that prison feel, so we started moving towards just the eight-foot fence with barbed wire even more, excuse me, not barbed wire, with chain link. And even more so, that chain link's just quite substantial, visually, it's, it's often a point of contention or complaint. So our typical fence in almost all jurisdictions we work in, Massachusetts, Maine, Pennsylvania, Illinois, is this agricultural fence. But if it challenges the board in, in some way that, that doesn't help my cause, we're happy to flip to, back to chain link. This site, completely out of sight, out of mind from everyone, I don't, I don't mind, that's just our typical detail that we use.
Yeah, just like to see what it is.
Yeah.
I think we can probably provide some details, I think it's actually the one, type of fence that's used at the Ring Road site, which has recently been operational in Kingston.
You're saying Ring Road?
Yeah, Plimpton and Kingston.
But I don't want to talk about Ring Road.
Well, I just, I know that
Represent Ring Road?
No, I don't.
Oh, yeah. I'd love to talk to you about Ring Road.
That fence type is used in, it's also, meets all building permits.
Surely not screening the road or Surely not screening the road or anywhere.
It's not a screening fence, but it does meet the building code.
I just don't remember seeing it, so I just wonder what it is exactly.
I think the point I'd make is that's the fence de jour for solar developers, really across the country. There's no difference to us whether it's chain link or it's the agricultural fence.
Yeah, whatever's safer.
The fine safe, right? But it's, if the chain, if it is, safety is the factor. The number one factor for this board is we don't want high school kids getting in here to, you know, steal some bug lights or whatnot, and we want to move toward, you know, more secure, more heavy-duty chain-link fence. If minimal impact, if allowing more critters to move in and out of this, of this array after it's complete is the goal, then the agricultural fence is a better choice. So we're happy to go with you.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions?
I don't know.
Okay. Do you have anything else you want to add? All right, so I'll open it up to the public. Mrs. LaFleur, would you like to comment?
Kim LaFleur, seventy-two Brook Street, also fifty-four R Brook, and we also have a parcel zero, Mr. Schmidt, for your benefit, I don't believe you were here at the last.
I was not.
I didn't get a chance to raise my concerns to you, so I apologize if anything is intended. But we are the abutters of the property that the cranberry bogs are. Those cranberry bogs, to the best of my knowledge, date back to the eighteen-eighties, as do several other parcels on our property. So they are wetland bogs. Their reservoir is our main water source for the farm. And as, I appreciate the validation that the existing drainage basin is not working because it does flood our property. So to have the second drainage basin, and we, I raised that issue with the Conservation Commission as well at the previous hearing. So looking forward to having those issues addressed in subsequent plans. As far as, there were some questions on the deforestation and gravel, as in a butter. Their deforestation was going on in that property in two thousand and twenty-three. I wasn't able to look my own eyes. The gravel removal on the property is unpermitted. As of last summer, when I had filed a public records request, there was no permit for gravel removal on-site across all three main parcels, plus dismal time triangle. So when you look at the property now, you say it's, you know, it's disturbed, it's holy. Well, it wasn't that way a year ago. Significant gravel has been removed, to the best of my non-engineered qualified estimates. But I know, and I mentioned to this board in the previous hearing, we had a gravel removal operation permitted on our own property, based on that size, based on the acreage of this. We're talking hundreds of thousands of yards of material have been removed across all three sites. So that's why you're not getting grass to grow. It's, it's just been stripped out. And so when you're looking at the slopes, and you say, yeah, you can't see it because it's a cliff, you know, it comes up off the edge of our property and it just goes straight down. Assuming they will continue to take some of the less desirable material backfill on those slopes and get that correct. But right now, the way the property is being managed, the water pitches towards us. It floods into our access road around the bogs. And in cases of high stormwater events, you know, we'll get water across our road into our smaller retention pond under our comp house with that string of bogs out there. So really, just hoping that the board will take that into consideration, ensuring that the property is going to be maintained the way it's supposed to be maintained. I understand gravel is outside of the scope of this board. But I raised the issue a year ago. I raised it to the select board, and nothing was done about it, other than the owner was given a cease and desist. And we were told that they would get a retroactive permit, so that way we could ensure that the slopes were going to be taken care of. Again, you keep your water, we'll keep ours. That hasn't happened. So I understand that this board can require the stormwater issue to be remediated and make, again, ensuring that this new project will not continue to negatively impact our property. We're going to put that water, you know, we need to keep, keep this sand out of our water, keep this runoff, you know, on his property. But when we're looking at bylaws of tree removal, gravel removal, the site misses that mark. And that's for you as board members to handle. Again, I raised the issue, and it kind of fell on deaf ears as far as handling anything. And it pains me to have to, to come before a board and asking you to do something about it, because people don't want to be bad neighbors. But I feel this is the only recourse that we have, is to just have something put in, you know, in the requirements. Again, you keep your water, we'll keep our water, and we'll all be good neighbors.
Can I ask, if you're, can I ask you a few questions? If that's okay with you?
Yes, definitely.
I missed your name. I'm sorry.
Kim LaFleur.
And your address?
Resident, seventy-two Brook.
Okay. So what, your biggest concerns are, you own the cranberry, let me, I just took some notes, so I want to make sure I got it right. You own the cranberries bog next door. There's the, there is drainage, a stormwater runoff that flows under your property that should be captured and managed on their property for that failed detention system. The deforestation was in two thousand and twenty-three, two years ago, not five years ago. What was there prior?
Forest. I mean, there.
Was it, was it the tree?
There was parts of the tree farm that were, I would say, loosely managed saplings, you know, in here and there, but mostly overgrown trees.
Okay.
It was large forestry equipment brought in, a fella buncher, you know, was kind of, I call it the ridge.
It wasn't like they cleared the Christmas trees and didn't plant anymore. They, they had to come in with equipment and physically.
This was large equipment, removing large trees. Now, from the back of my house, you can, the forest has been thin where they cleared.
Yeah.
And I know it's been mentioned multiple times by multiple boards, nobody sees it. Well, that's not exactly the case.
Well, that's not what the intention of the bylaw is either.
Exactly. You know, we see it, we know that it's there. We know that it's allowed.
The intention of that bylaw is to build solar fields where we have land that's available to it without destroying, without deforesting. Obviously, they deforested, hoping that time would pass, but they still have a couple more years, according to what I'm hearing.
This, this was deforested and just given the proximity to Plumpton Sand and Gravel.
Yeah.
Nobody saw the trucks, you know, they just accessed from that property to Plumpton Sand and Gravel. And we're not talking ten-wheeler dump trucks, we're talking the big rock trucks. That's why you've got pits and bits of the good material. Again, I, I know we had our own project there, but we went through the select board and we had a permit process and reviewed, and we paid our, what was due to.
Yeah, you respected the process, yes.
We respected the process, and that has not been done here. And had that been done, I don't think I would be here, because I don't think the stormwater issue would be the way it is right now.
Okay, a couple more things. The non-permanent gravel operations that they did a cease and desist, did they ever come back and do the proper paperwork to get the permit, or they just stopped working entirely?
I was only informed that they were issued a cease and desist and that I should expect notification when they went before the select board for a permit. We've never received that notification.
Two more questions. Will you see this facility from your home?
I can see trucks when they're moving right now. I.
Take a look over the next six months.
I mean, I can see, if I, from my house, the existing pieces, no. From the bogs, yes, it's not screened.
Okay.
There's a fence there, but when we're on the lot, we can see it. I believe the other residence is forty-one Spring Street, which right now, the house is vacant. That might be the only other house that can see the property, could see the existing. Again, they've created a bowl. And if you go back and look at the old maps that were brought before this board for the first phase of the project, you can see the contour lines, what is now phase two and phase three. And so that's where I was like, I'm not an engineer, but somebody should be able to go back and calculate. You've got a seventy-foot contour, and now it's not seventy feet. You can figure out how much gravel was taken out of there.
John, do you have, does this survey show the existing condition as it is today or several years?
The survey to this is what's out there, I don't know if it's today, but it's after it's been.
After it's been disturbed?
After it's been.
Okay. All right. And so we, if anyone wants to find out how much was, gravel's been removed, we could figure that out, too much harper. But I'm not asking, I'm not asking that we find that out, but we could figure it out if we wanted to.
So there are plans on file here.
And my last question is, are you the abutter that's less than three hundred feet from the facility? The John, the question that John raised about?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes. Our property, yes, that's the box to the south, the reservoir.
Okay.
Yes, that's.
So that facility will, will be within three hundred feet of your property line?
Of the property line, yes. The existing facilities are.
Right, but that was before we have the regulations. And then one of the reasons we have the regulations is so we don't negatively impede on the abutters. Okay.
If that's what they're, if they're proposing, it's less than three hundred feet, that is our abutter.
Okay.
We are, I guess I would say, the primary abutter along the majority of the property.
All right. So just, my three biggest concerns today is the stormwater management, where the water table is, because we're in the aquifer, the land disturbance, which is important to me, and then the offset, the setback. Those are the three, three or four biggest concerns I have at this moment. I'm looking forward to going on the site visit and seeing things physically with the plans to better understand what's being described to me today.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments or thoughts?
I guess one thing, there were some concerns about the fire department coming through. They reviewed all this, and you mentioned some one side would be real difficult for the fire department. Did they realize the access? Have they gone over the fire department, looked at all this?
I'm going to reach out to them, invite them to come on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good idea, if we can get.
I'll give him heads up too now.
Or is he commissioner? I don't know what his specific title is, but if we can get him to come.
Okay.
That would be good.
Did fire or police provide a comment letter at the last meeting?
I think that was Board of Health.
Where about could they even have a comment, fire?
I don't have that in front of me. I can look that up later.
Fire and police would have some interest if there's kids out there. Police got to be able to get in.
Okay.
We got a comment letter from Plumpton Fire Department reviewing the plans. They asked, their focal point was making sure there's a clear area between the fence and the solar project, so they could traverse three hundred sixty degrees, they asked for at least ten feet. And then Board of Health was the group that I think emailed you or told you they don't have any comments. We have not heard from fire.
Police.
We have not heard from police. We heard from fire, we heard from health, we've not heard from police.
I think it's a good idea, so that they see there's a couple of different means of getting in there. They need to know the conditions they're coming through.
Okay. All right, so since the applicant is going to be preparing a response, we, we are not meeting on the nineteenth of August. We will be meeting next on the second of September, which should be enough time, I would think, for you to have your response and provide it to John.
We have the site visit right now scheduled on the twenty-third.
Correct.
So it's going to be my goal to have our team turn the plan set and issue the response letter prior to the twenty-third. Number one, so we can have a revised plan set to look at in the field. But number two, just to continue to make progress. So that in theory, the third revision of the plan set would incorporate the second round of comments from Mr. Chesky, as well as this board's sidewalk on the twenty-third.
And probably we need more than a week.
No, no, I don't mean to finish it. I just mean, we're just going to try to have an updated plan set. What we all want to do is take, take that plan set out.
Not yet, twenty-third. Will you also email us a plan of how we're going to get in? Thank you.
And I would say, I, I do think that John's comment about staking some of those areas on the property would be particularly useful, like you noted, to stake the areas where the access, isn't that right, John? You were suggesting.
I know where you are. I mean, we walked it together, which was helpful to me, because it's a pretty, there are some stakes that will limit work. They were, and they probably will still be out there, so that was helpful. But because of the topography and the disturbance, it's tough to really, it's hard to pin yourself down out there. You know where you are when you can see the panels on the one side, but, you know, you're in a hole, you can't see out of it, you're, the woods are pretty thick where the rattlesnake woods around the perimeter. So, yeah, definitely would be helpful to know where you are on the site, a couple places like that, when the road comes in and, you know, things of that nature. Most of it, you can kind of, you'll be able to tell the basin, there's not work, it looks pretty, that's, that's right there on the side.
Yeah, but I think for even, even for the expansion of Lake Street, you know, we have them put in a couple of stakes, so that it's just visually easier to see when you're out there.
And that was just a rectangle.
Will the proponent be at the site visit?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Go have someone there.
Do we have a timeline? It's eight twenty-three. Have we walked in a time in?
Yes.
Ten o'clock?
It is. Do you have it on your calendar?
I have it, it's ten AM.
I have ten AM.
Great. I just want to confirm that I can send out an email, just with a quick, basically, you're going to drive in through Plumpton Sand and Gravel in the exact route that Mr. Chesky described. Plumpton Sand and Gravel around the existing areas, you can drive right into the southern corner of the proposed area.
Okay.
So the potential access, is that going to be used at some point?
Hope not.
So you're not planning on using that?
I don't plan on using it at all. And you recognize Mr. Chesky's comments that the existing projects are not moving in a good enough job maintaining it. So when we get to that point, we'll talk about how we can tell you we're going to do better than the other guys, but that emergency access is never meant to be used.
So you say other guys, so you're, you're not associated with the other solar fields at all?
I mean, similar to traditional real estate development, there's a developer that designs the solar project, the house, the apartment building, Nashby Commons, and then an owner comes in, long-term owner operator.
So you'll flip this once you're approved and constructed?
Uh, yes.
And be put onto the folks next door that don't maintain it? Okay. Nothing. No, I'm saying you're going to build it and you're going to flip it, and then it's going to go to a third party that we have no influence or no ability to talk to them about what our concerns are unless we have to pull them in.
I mean, that's one way to say it, but.
That's. Understood. I'm just letting everyone understand.
So can you not get, so I have solar panels in my backyard, and I've made a point to find out who the general contractor is every time it's changed. So I have a phone number or an email to contact that person. Is that something you guys can provide to us?
Are you saying for this project going forward or for?
Yes, this project going forward.
You guys can do almost whatever you need within the conditions of any approval. And if you guys felt that the belt of, the current O and M requirements wasn't good enough, and you wanted to add belt suspenders, notifications, et cetera, I'm happy to work with you guys on how it can be better documented. It doesn't do me any service to come into this town or the town next door when, you know, commitments that were made to a town aren't being followed, or stormwater requirements are not functioning properly. I bet if Project One and Project Two were functioning properly from a stormwater standpoint, I think we'd be a little bit in a different relationship here. So this doesn't, this makes my life harder, so the harder you make it on me.
So how, how can we leverage you to have the abutter fix the stormwater system?
You'll see in the next revision, I'm going to propose to fix everything and redo everything. And then we'll put the existing stormwater basin for Project Two under the jurisdiction of Project Three, and you guys can raise the level of accountability to a point where you guys feel better.
And does that come into a landscape bond? And does that come into a landscape bond? I mean, like you say, if you've got a system that's not working, well, right now, we have no, no way to make you fix that. And again, to John's point, what happens on every one of these solar systems we've done in Plenton, because we're a nice easy target, you build it, you sell it, now we're chasing. My point being, Ring Road is totally not screened. So when you've got a system that's now failing and we want to put more in, and you're going to sell the project, what is our ramification as far as, maybe it's a landscape bond that's covered, that covers the maintenance of these swales. So when the new person comes along, somebody has some kind of liability, a way for us to chase them down and get this thing fixed, but I, like, I love the saying, you keep your water, I'll keep mine. So, I mean, that's, my only question is, is there a way that we can bring this into a bond situation, along with landscaping bonds and decommission bonds, to make sure that, you know, not necessarily, we don't trust you or you're a guy who's building it, but John's buying it and John says, well, I didn't agree to any of that. So that's my concern.
So obviously, decommissioning bond is the easy one. You guys have probably had failures in landscaping in the past.
Not to interrupt you, but listen, we got the situation where they agree to a bond, unless someone makes sure, it gets, now we had one that never even, they never even got the bond, said they were going to get a bond, so it goes to the next person, well, you were supposed to get the bond, he bought it, you didn't get it, he didn't care. So these bonds are complicated.
And just, and just to piggyback on what Paul is saying, so that's one of the many, many reasons why we require people to bring things physically to the board, because people were like, well, we mailed you the bond, and we don't have anyone who collects the mail. So, yeah. So I think that those are definitely good ideas. We can, we can talk about requiring that sort of thing.
The point I was trying to make for Ricky D'Angelo is the town of Cushinget has dealt with this same problem, and they have, they require a stormwater bond. None of these things are unrealistic or too challenging for me. And like I said, it's my chunk to make this better, to make the commitments that we make in our plan set and the conditions more effective for the town. Because eventually I'm going to retire, these are infrastructure projects that have 20, 30, 40-year life. So I'm not going to ever push back on any, any additional teeth that this board wants to put in where reasonable. And so I bring up a stormwater bond, you can very easily look at approved projects from the town of Cushinget, they require decommissioning bond for the obvious reason, landscaping bond, which you guys do for the obvious, stormwater is another one. The stormwater features don't function. If I wasn't proposing a project here and Ms. LaFleur had an issue, you know, I'm an easy target right now, but ultimately, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be too easy for you guys to get this thing repaired. I think we can take care of it, but we're happy to, to explore our stormwater bond to make sure that once we improve or fix or repair, it's a very sandy site, particulates can get in there, can impact the function of these basins, or where money where not.
And who is the person supposed to inspect these excess swales to make sure they are working after the, like, say, in other words, like you said, if this project didn't come through?
Yeah, I don't think when those projects were approved that there were decisions issued. I think the plans just got signed.
Okay.
So.
Is there a way to have inspections on these things, you know, periodically?
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, that's an annual report. But then it's on us to make sure that they provide it, right?
Okay, all right. So we, we already have the site walk scheduled for the 23rd of August. Does the applicant want a continuance of the public hearing to our next meeting at September 2nd at 6:30? So the applicant has requested to continue the public hearing to September 2nd at 6:30. I move that we do so. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And just, just for the record, so everybody knows, Mr. Cohen has recused himself from everything to do with voting on the project, so we forgot to say that at the beginning.
Paul, can I ask a quick question about the sidewalk? Is that a continuation of the public hearing or is that an informational sidewalk going on?
We noticed it as a continuation of the public hearing because there will be a quorum.
Yeah, perfect. I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, so then, we don't have any new business. Have people looked at the meeting minutes for July 15th?
Yes.
Does anyone have any, thank you, John. Does anyone have any comments on the meeting minutes?
John, can you stick around for one minute?
They were beautiful.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Name of the farm, though? I think Anne called it.
Did I get the thing wrong? Christopher?
No, it was, I had, I guess I'm longer than it does about.
I just said, Christmas Tree Farm.
Yeah.
Did I spell Vo-Pat wrong?
No, 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 it was nothing like that.
And then I just called it Capital Christmas, Capital Tree Farm. Do you want to read? You're okay?
Okay.
All right, so I'm going to move that we, that we approve the minutes for July 15th, 2025, as written. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have some correspondence. From the town of Halifax, a public hearing on an application for a greenhouse.
From the town of Kingston. Raymond McAndrew.
And. A notice of public hearing for an addition to a house.
We'll be there.
And. From the town of Pembroke. Variance for an accessory dwelling unit. No one seems to care about the correspondence.
It's all from out of town.
I know. Pembroke. A definitive subdivision plan on the country club.
Why aren't we being notified?
Because we're budding towns.
We're budding towns. If there was any interest in any of these things, if it affected anybody. Halifax, two-car garage.
Oh, jeez.
And.
Two-car garage in Halifax.
Yeah, they all need variances, so the zoning board of appeals from all these towns is, this is Carver duplex. So we have some correspondence. Does anyone have any questions, comments on the correspondence, interested in attending any of these meetings?
I am not.
Joanne said she would.
Yeah, I'll do them all.
Yeah.
All right.
I enjoy this.
Then I move that we close the public meeting of the Plenton Planning Board at 7:48 p.m. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.